All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's call to order our Jeffco Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 20th, 2025. Welcome. It's good to see you. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper here with Commissioner Kerr and Commissioner Zenzinger. Our clerk this morning is Karina Madrigal and our host is Zara Murad. I'm sorry, Zara Murad, who will handle requests for public comment and public testimony signup in the chat for those of you who are joining us virtually this morning. There are several ways to join our hybrid meeting, all of which are listed on our website at jeffco.us. You're always welcome to reach out to the board on the county's website at jeffco.us or you can reach us by email at commish@jeffco.us. We'd also like to ask everyone to please go ahead and silence your phones and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Sustainability Commission, it is my pleasure to introduce the winners of the Sixth Annual Jeffco Sustainability Awards. My name is Andy Kerr, one of your Jefferson County Commissioners. And then we'll have just a little background on the awards before we announce our winners. The Jefferson County Sustainability Commission is a volunteer advisory commission that provides expertise, resources, and sustainability awareness to our community. Its members are passionate and wanted to create an award to recognize our local communities' achievements related to environmental stewardship, efficient use of resources, economic vitality, and innovation. We do have some winners here in person with us this morning, but we also want to shout out to those joining us virtually and welcome them as well. And then winners, as we call your name, please join us here at the front to receive your award and we'll take we will take individual and then a group photo. So without further delay, our winners are, first of all, our Future Leader Award, Claire Naumer. So Claire, please come on up. Come on over. Yep. Claire Naumer, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah.
Makes me think maybe I'm not pronouncing it correctly. You want to tell your Naumer? Claire Naumer is a passionate and effective student leader driving real change in Jefferson County. As a founding member of Jeffco Students and Parents for Climate Action, she's led meetings with school boards and state legislators, organized community events, and helped spark key wins like the hiring of a district sustainability manager and a district application for electric school buses. Beyond this, Claire balances academics, competitive swimming, board service, and volunteer work, all with exceptional maturity and dedication. She's a natural leader, making a lasting impact, and we're proud to recognize her today. Another round of applause. And we're going to take a photo with Claire before we announce the rest of the winners.
Next, we have the Sustainable Business Award, and that award goes to New Moon Refillery. New Moon Refillery is redefining sustainability in Lakewood with their zero-waste, refill-first approach to everyday goods. Since launching, they've already diverted more than 2,500 containers from landfills and are helping their customers replace disposable items with reusable or compostable alternatives like bamboo dish brushes, Swedish dish cloths, and toothpaste tablets. In 2024 alone, they refilled more than 16,000 ounces of product and saved nearly 900 single-use containers through refills. They're also champions of local business and closed-loop systems, working with brands that take back packaging for reuse. And in true data nerd fashion, they created a personalized Refills in Review. It's a dashboard, and it gives customers a fun way to track their impact each year. New Moon Refillery is proof that small businesses can drive big environmental change, and they're just getting started. So big congrats to New Moon Refillery. And are they, are you with us? Oh, wonderful. Come on over. And please introduce yourself. We're so happy to have you here this morning.
I'm Sammy Heller. I'm the owner.
Yeah. Thank you. And here you go. Thank you for all you do. And we'll take a quick picture.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right. Again, a big congrats to New Moon Refillery. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
I appreciate it.
Next up, we have volunteer Betty Harris. Betty Harris has been the heart of the Littleton Garden Club for many years, generously sharing her knowledge of sustainable gardening and building a strong, connected community. She leads by example, offering free training, organizing resource sharing among members, hosting community lunches, and encouraging plant swaps and sales. Betty's passion for the planet and the future shines through everything she does. She's a true grassroots leader, helping sustainability take root one garden at a time. Come on over, Betty. Great to see you this morning. Thank you so much.
So our last awardee, I don't believe is here today, but we're going to go ahead and acknowledge them just in case they're listening online. So our next awardee is Educator of the Year, which goes to Julia Fliss. Julia Fliss of Evergreen Middle School is a tireless advocate for both climate action and her students. And as leader of the EMS Green Team, she has empowered young changemakers to not only make a difference at their school, but to take their voices to the district level. Recently guiding students as they testified in support of a Jeffco Public Schools Sustainability Policy. And through her mentorship, students are turning climate learning into real-world action. Their passion, confidence, and impact are a direct reflection of Julia's inspiring leadership. So congratulations, Julie, and congratulations to all of our winners. So before we take our group photo, just one more item, we want to thank everyone for joining us here today. And we would like to invite everyone to visit the Sustainability Commission's webpage via our Jeffco webpage, which is jeffco.us, for more details on all of our award winners and the work that the commission is doing. On behalf of the commissioners, congratulations to all of the winners of the 2025 Sustainability Awards.
Yeah, there's no escape. And also, we should mention, we want to welcome the newest member of the Jeffco team, a new intern working on sustainability issues here in Jeffco. Share with us your name one more time. Lee, Lee, thanks so much for joining us. Come on up, everyone.
I had shirts to
I know.
Congrats again to all of our Sustainability Award winners. Next on our agenda is public comment, and the board will take up to 15 minutes at the beginning of our meeting and if needed, additional public comment at the end of our meeting. And this is specifically for items that are not listed on the agenda. We'll begin with those who have signed up for public comment. I don't see anyone signed up in the hearing room, but let me ask, is there anyone present who would like to address the board at this time? All right, and we'll check to see if we have anyone joining us online.
We have someone online.
Okay, great. I just see the, thank you so much. And I believe that is Mr. Mike Rollick. Mr. Rollick, if you'd like to go ahead with your comment, you have three minutes, and if you'd share with us your address as well.
For having me here today as a public comment. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Mike Rollick, and I'm at 1-873-5-WEST-59-DRY-GOLDEN-COLORADO-80403. And I would like to talk about the wildfire mitigation plans for Beaver Ranch Park. We did do a hike up there the other day. I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to go check it out, but the major concern we're all looking at is wind and the propagation of wind in the face of clear cuts. When you have trees, trees act as a boundary layer. It's an aerodynamic force. It actually helps slow down the wind. If you cut the trees, we have ample research that shows you have more wind throw, and if that wind throw happens to be burning because of a wildfire, you could have a situation like a Marshall Fire where you have meadows that can then accelerate the wind and then propagate that wildfire a little faster downrange. When we looked at the specific area, there is a ridge line and a switchback on the ridge line. I've got the coordinates. It's 39 north, 30 by 14, and 105, 1822. I can always bring that up later. But the point is that ridge line is up about 8,400 feet and change. And then you have about a 30-degree slope downwards towards Castro Creek. First of all, anything over 30 degrees could have erosion, sediment issues, and also avalanche problems. I know the Colorado Geologic Survey recommends anything over 30 degrees gets assessed by them as well. From what I can see, that hasn't been done, and I would ask that you do that. Also, along that ridge line, I would ask that Jeffco looks at putting a wind measurement device, maybe transparent to public as well, to check the before and the after. And then another one possibly right along South Foxton Road or just at the entry to the park nearby, something that can be controlled by Jeffco Open Space. They're usually relatively inexpensive, just a few hundred bucks per enometer. But then we would actually get the data for the before and the after. After the clear cut, we can see if this is the right method or the wrong method, or maybe some form of mitigation. What I would suggest is looking at the fact that people do plant trees for wind barriers and wind breaks all throughout the Midwest. I would suggest looking at that ridge line and potentially leaving that one alone because when we were there, that was the highest localized wind. There's something called catabatic wind. Catabatic wind is when wind goes down slope, it compresses, heats up, and moves faster. Obviously, we all have heard of the Santa Ana winds. That is an extreme form of the catabatic winds, but they happen here as well. Anytime you're going to cut down slope and you have the wind coming over ridge line and plunging back down, you're going to have that potential issue. Last, when we did the hike there, there was ample piles of old cut wood from the last time. There was some kind of a cleanup, so to speak, but there's a lot of fuel still on the ground. I would suggest that that'd be the first place to start. But yeah, please, if there's any chance that we can get the wind data before and after, that would help us all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rollick, for your comments. And Ms. Murad, I'm going to ask, is there anyone else who's joining us virtually who'd like to address the board?
No one online.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That closes this segment of public comment. Next, we have the approval of the minute stated May 13th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve?
Move for the approval of the minute stated May 13th, 2025.
Second.
Ms. Madrigal, would you please call the vote? Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper? Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we have nine items on the consent agenda. Commissioners, would either of you like to take an item off of consent?
No, thank you.
No.
All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.9?
I move for the approval of Consent Agenda items 7.1 through 7.9.
Second.
Ms. Madrigal, would you please call the vote? Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper? Yes, and that motion passes. Next is our regular agenda, and we have no items on our regular agenda or the hearing consent portion of our meeting, which is also followed by the hearing regular portion of our meeting. We also have no items for this portion of the agenda, which brings us to our next round of public comment. Checking again to see if there's anyone in the hearing room or online, Ms. Murad, who would like to address the board at this time?
No one online.
All right, and seeing no one in the hearing room who would like to address the board during public comment, we will go ahead and close this portion of public comment, which brings us to Commissioner Reports. And I will start with Commissioner Zenzinger.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of items. I had the opportunity to participate in a civics gallery walk at Jefferson Junior Senior High. It was an incredible experience, especially for this former social studies teacher, to be back in the classroom, in a social studies classroom with students that are tackling big issues. The gallery walk featured a number of projects that the students put together about a current issue in the community that they'd like to solve. It was inspiring, looking at the different perspectives that the students brought to these projects. So I just wanted to congratulate them and their teacher for such a great project. We did have a Jefferson Public Parkway Highway Authority meeting last week. I have nothing to report other than the motion to accept the right-of-way regarding the bridge was accepted and voted unanimously by the board. I'm also excited that I had an opportunity to attend the Deer Creek Canyon Park opening. For me, that was new. I've never been in that area of the county before. And quite frankly, the talking points that we heard from Commissioner Dahl Kemper and some of the other speakers was also new information to me. I had no idea, and it's because I wasn't here and when that fire occurred. So I didn't understand truly what kind of an effort took place in order to prevent the loss of structures. There were zero losses of structures. There was nobody injured or hurt. It was an incredible collaborative effort, and I just did not understand until that opening what kind of cooperation and good work that was done on the part of the county and collaboration with our partners and the sheriff's office on that, solving for that fire. So it was really good for me to be there and to witness and hear all of the information that was shared. I also had an opportunity to participate in two conferences last week where I served as a speaker and a panelist. The first one was at a special district conference on Thursday to look up at the role of metro districts and how metro districts play a valuable role with regard to affordable housing. It was a really good conversation about the role of these metro districts. And secondly, on Friday, I participated in a discussion with an organization called Colorado Cooperation, where we looked at the question of local control versus state control and where should the authority lie regarding land use issues as it pertains to quality of life and affordability? And what is the argument for emphasizing leadership and local control when we're discussing these complex issues? It was a really great conversation. It was very timely, considering the news that has recently come out regarding Governor Polis and his executive order issued, that he issued on the very same day that we were having this conversation on Friday about how he expects to dole out punishment and to restrict local government access to funding and other grant measures if they do not comply, quote unquote, with our new state housing laws. And yesterday, there was a response on the part of local governments asserting their rights to be able to address these land use issues on their own as municipalities with home rule. And so they are suing the governor over that executive order. And I want to commend them for standing up for local control. I advocated very strongly down at the state legislature that we should be emphasizing partnerships and not preemption. I believe very strongly that there are benefits to having the state involved in these types of questions and helping to create solutions around affordable housing. I do believe that a top-down approach can help considering some of the nimbyism that gets thrown around when there are strong political differences. But I don't believe that that is the best approach. I don't believe that we can just skip over and skip to the end and not work through those issues locally in community. I believe that, yes, the state can help provide infrastructure dollars. The state can help us provide, for example, helping to eliminate or reduce the cost of car ownership, you know, which would help make things more affordable. And the state does play a role with regard to socioeconomic components of affordable housing. But when you take a top-down approach, as much of this legislation, these new laws do, I think that there are some drawbacks to that as well. I think that local jurisdictions have the unique ability to be able to localize the impacts that are going to be happening, especially with regard to land use decisions and quality of life issues. I believe that different communities have different resources, which impacts our ability to address the impacts of land use, different road networks, water sanitation requirements that we have to consider and think about. I also believe that funding is a really important issue when it comes to these kinds of things, and local governments are constrained. I mean, just right here in Jefferson County, prior to the passage of 1A, we were looking at having to cut back 10% to 15% of our existing operations. And just because we have passed 1A does not mean that we're going to be able to fully address our $600 million in unfunded transportation needs that we have here in the county. So funding is always a consideration when it comes to these kinds of land use decisions that we on the ground that have to implement these land use decisions know best. I truly believe that it is local governments that do the job of planning and that they are the entities that have the most experience around this. So we know our communities, and I truly commend those municipalities that are coming forward to defend their rights, honestly. It was a really good conversation, and I do believe that Colorado Cooperation recorded the discussion. If you'd like to watch it online, you would just have to go to their website. I want to make a quick announcement about the Sustainability Award winners this morning. There will be a news flash on our homepage that will have more information about the award winners and their projects, and so I highly recommend that you take a look at our Jefferson County webpage, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Great update. Thanks, Commissioner Zenzinger. Commissioner Kerr?
Thank you. I was happy to be a part of the Red Rocks Community College graduation on Saturday and just seeing some of our other fine elected officials from throughout Jefferson County there, some of our mayors and city council folks. I will point out, the weather at this year's graduation was exactly the same as last year's graduation. Just an aside there, so the weather isn't always different in Colorado. I do want to thank the Rotary Club of Golden for having their ethics. It was their 20th year of their Ethics in Business Awards. Over 200 people on Friday came together to see the awards given out, and also we had a special keynote speaker, Ed Pearl Mutter. And between Ed speaking about ethics, certainly his time in politics, he was well-known in DC and here in Colorado in elected office as being someone who spoke the truth, got along with everyone regardless of their own personal politics, and was there to get good things done. And one of the things he brought up, of course, being at a Rotary meeting, they brought up, but the four-way test or the four truths that the Rotary, the Rotarians talk about so much. And I just think it's, in this time of division, in this time of, we'll just call it craziness happening, I just want to mention the four truths that Rotarians often talk about. And the first is, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? Ed also mentioned that in his office, he had five things that they focused on, four very similar to this, but he also talked about the fifth one that in his office was always, make sure that you're having fun with whatever you're doing, that folks are having fun and bringing energy to their day. I took part in the Mile High Flood District tour for board members, so other county commissioners, other mayors from throughout the metro area. We toured all the projects all the way down into Douglas County, Littleton, in Jeffco, but seeing various projects that the Mile High Flood District has been a part of with many, many local governments and HOAs, making sure that water goes where it's supposed to go, but also that there are areas that while they might occasionally flood, that they're built so that they can handle the water when they need to, but then also their recreation areas and natural areas that wildlife and people can appreciate as well. So it's great to go on that tour with lots of good folks. The Jefferson County Sustainability Commission had a big day today and also last week, we welcomed Mike Nelson, former chief meteorologist for Channel 7, to come in and speak on energy, especially renewable energy and our national grid, both for security but also economic vitality moving into the future. And this is a project that he's very passionate about and committed to. Also, if you get a chance to, he has, the book is called The Smallest, what's the name of it? The Smallest Book on Climate Change. I think it's about 12 pages, and you can download it for free off the internet. Definitely give that a look. But just always like to remind folks that Mike Nelson, while a meteorologist on TV, he never shied away from sharing real science and what's really happening in our world with global climate change. I do want to remind folks, especially our employees, that we do have a couple of diversity, equity, and inclusion programs happening this week. And then Monday, the county will be closed for Memorial Day, and please take some time over the weekend and on Monday to remember those who gave their all for our country. Thank you.
more, since the federal landscape is also changing in terms of funding for wildfire risk reduction. So we're paying very close attention to that, with more responsibility placed on the state and local communities. So those collaborations become especially important. You heard Commissioner Zenzinger touch on the reopening of Deer Creek Canyon. We are so excited, all of us, to be a part of that, along with our county manager and many others. We joined the sheriff, Open Space, Conifer Fire, to make the announcement official last week. You know, the quarry fire scorched 35% of this beloved Jeffco Open Space Park, resulting in 580 acres of high, moderate, and low severity burns. And I agree with Commissioner Zenzinger's point about the restoration efforts. It was extraordinary to think that all of this work was done within 10 months. Originally, the park was not expected to be open for another two years, but helicopters dropped 10,000 pounds of native seed mix to stabilize the soil. They removed standing dead trees along trails. They assessed rock fall hazards, and so much more. So great work, and a big shout-out to all of our partners who were involved in that effort. Agree with Commissioner Kerr. It was wonderful to be part of the Golden Rotary's Ethics in Business Awards. Huge congratulations to all the award winners. And I wanted to mention, save the date for those of you who are listening this morning, there will be a community meeting on the 2025 Wildfire Mitigation Projects, and that is being hosted by the Conifer Fire District. They'll talk about projects that are underway to reduce wildfire risk, projects that will be visible, especially along the 285 corridor. Numerous partners are involved. It's June 3 at 6:30 at West Jeff Middle School. June 3, 6:30 at West Jeff Middle School. And also, a big thank you to everyone who joined us for last night's Jefferson County Board of Commissioners Town Hall. It was a virtual town hall. We appreciate you carving time out of your day. Lots of engagement, lots of great questions. Big thanks to our public affairs team, who organized and led that effort, along with all of our subject matter experts, like Dan Conway, our county manager, Joe Kirby. We also had Brian Keating from the Jeffco Sheriff's Office, Mary Berg, and many others who joined us, including our county attorney. So we really appreciate your help. And then one other heads-up, or save the date, I wanted to mention. It's National Trails Day, and Jeffco Open Space will be at Elk Meadow Park, that's Saturday, also in June, June 7, from 9 to 1:30. National Trails Day at Elk Meadow Park, June 7, starting at 9:00 a.m. And volunteers, if you're interested in joining us, will be spending the day maintaining trails, removing invasive weeds, and planting native species. So very excited. And they're going to continue the work to remove harmful barbed wire. So we want to thank those of you who might consider joining us for those volunteer efforts at Elk Meadow. With that, I'll turn it over to county manager, Joe Kirby.
Good morning, commissioners. Two quick items for you. First, just a reminder for everyone that this Thursday, May 22, our Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport is hosting two open houses or town halls. It's an open walk-in format where you can visit various stations to talk to our staff about operations, or planning, or development. And so encourage everyone to take a moment out of their day to attend. The first one is from 10 to 11 on Thursday, and then the second one is from 5 to 6 p.m. on Thursday at our Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Also, a reminder to everyone that next Tuesday, May 27, we do not have a Board of County Commissioners hearing, nor do we have our normal staff briefing that follows the hearing. So just a reminder, and Lynn, this one's for you, that we appreciate your attendance frequently, but just a reminder to everyone, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Good reminder regarding that meeting. And we'll go to our county attorney, Kim Soros.
Just want to send a shout-out again to all of the high school and college grads, including my daughter, Kaitlyn, and Commissioner Kerr's son, Brayden, who both graduated from college within the past two weeks.
Thanks so much, everyone who joined us today. We're so glad you're here this morning, and we'll now adjourn this public hearing, and we'll continue up on the fifth floor for our briefing at about, let's say about 10 of. And if we gather there before then, even better, but we'll definitely start around 10 of. Thanks.